All right. Hello, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Rental Housing Board. Today is Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Luis Mier.
Here.
Esperanza Martinez. Tracy La.
Here.
Ernie Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Have quorum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join as the being ready begin.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts, the, sorry, excuse me, the Rental Housing Board regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
None. There are none.
Okay, thank you. This is time for the commission to consider matters under Consent Calendar, Items 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to consider Items 1 and 2? Luis, motion?
Yeah.
And do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Okay. Matter approved by unanimous consent. And next, we have two items under Work Study Session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under Work Study Session is Petition Process Presentation.
In your chair, we'd like to introduce, she gave the last presentation, the amazing Andrea Garcia Miller from our City Attorney's Office, attorney extraordinary.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a very generous opening. Thank you.
She has about 20 things that she's helping us out of a lot of holes and problems, so.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board members. I'm going to do another presentation, another training. So this one is called, is all about the petition process. Next slide, please. Okay, so again, because I'm from the City Attorney's Office, I gotta give you some disclaimers. The following information is provided for Board Member Training purposes. The following does not constitute legal advice. And thank you for your cooperation. Next slide, please. So the goals that I hope to meet over the next, hopefully, not longer than an hour, is discuss type, the types of petitions, detail the petition process, give an overview of the appeal process, and then strategize on how to implement best practices. So goal number one, let's, let's talk about petitions.
Sorry, excuse me. Sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
I was told that this meeting may not be livestreamed. Do you know if... Okay. Well. Okay. Thank you then. Sorry about that.
Okay, that's okay. So there are three types of petitions under our Rent Stabilization and Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. And again, everything we talk about here today is pursuant to our ordinance, which I'll refer to as ordinance just for short. Number one is a fair return petition for rent increase. Two is a capital improvement petition. And number three is a tenant petition. So the first two petitions are landlord petitions, and the third is a tenant petition. So what is a fair return petition for rent increase? And the slides cite to the sections under the ordinance where, where you can find this information. So a landlord may submit a fair return petition to the program administrator requesting a rent increase in excess of the maximum allowable increase if a landlord believes it is necessary in order to obtain a fair and reasonable return. So right below, that is a snippet from our website, and it indicates that the maximum allowable rent increase from September 1, 2024 through August 31st, 2025 is 3%, and that's based on the calculations provided under the ordinance. So by right, every landlord in the city of Santa Ana that's subject to the ordinance is allowed to raise the rent 3% for that particular time period. So anything in excess of that, if they think that they need a greater return than that, they can submit a fair return petition.
Next slide, please.
So the standard of review for a fair return petition is all relevant factors shall be considered, including changes to the CPI, which is short for the Consumer Price Index, and that's published on federal websites, rent charged for comparable units, the length of time since the last fair return petition, completion of any rehab work and cost, changes in taxes, changes in rent paid by a landlord, changes in utility charges paid by the landlord, changes in reasonable operating expenses, changes in net operating income, a need for repairs, amount and quality of housing services, compliance with the rental agreement, and landlord substantial compliance with the ordinance. So these are all factors that may be considered in a fair return petition. Next slide, please. So the next type of petition is called a capital improvement petition. And a landlord may submit a capital improvement petition to the program administrator requesting a pass-through cost to tenants to cover expenses incurred by the landlord to complete capital improvements for a rental unit. Next slide, please. So what is a capital improvement, first of all? A capital improvement is an improvement, addition, or major repair to a rental unit. So there are also some qualifying factors. That capital improvement had to be paid for and completed after 11/19/2021. Why is that date relevant? That's the date that our first set of ordinances, which were formerly called the Rent Stabilization Ordinance and a separate Just Cause Ordinance, Just Cause Eviction Ordinance, were passed by City Council. So that was that date. So all capital improvements have to be done after that date to be considered. The capital improvement has to have a useful life of five or more years, and that is required to be amortized over the useful life of the improvement. Next slide, please. So what are some types of capital improvements? So we have a whole list here, and that's taken directly from our ordinance. So they can be structural improvements, electrical, plumbing, or mechanical system improvements, roofing, carpeting, draperies, stuccoing the building exterior, air conditioning, security gates, a swimming pool, a sauna or hot tub, fencing, children's play equipment, if they're permanently installed, complete exterior painting, or other similar improvements that can be found in the Internal Revenue Code. Why are all these, why is the Internal Revenue Code relevant here? Because that's where, that's where we pull this from. That's where ordinance pulls it from, is these major repairs that landlords are allowed to take deductions on, tax deductions. And then, as determined by the Rental Housing Board, so that, that gives the board some discretion. If it's a major improvement, that's not necessarily listed up here. That's something that can, that can be considered by the board, or added by the board. So if you look, these are all major improvements. They're not like small little repairs that like, say, a handyman might help a landlord with. Next slide, please. So other capital improvement petition considerations. Timing is a factor. Again, the capital improvement was paid for and completed after 11/19/2021. The capital improvement was paid for and completed prior to filing the petition. And the petition must be initiated by the landlord within two years of completion of the capital improvement. So there are the, all those little time constraints that have to be considered. And these are all factors that are considered by the Rent Stabilization Division when they're deciding whether to accept a petition. Next slide, please. Other considerations for capital improvement petitions. A petition shall not apply to rental units or tenants whose initial rent was established after the landlord completed the capital improvement. So say, the landlord completed their capital improvement, a new tenant comes on to, to one of the units. When they submit their petition, that new tenant is not going to be considered under that petition because landlords are allowed to establish their base rent when a new tenant comes on. So theoretically, that landlord should be able to consider the capital improvements that they've already made and factor that into the rent. The next point, landlord may not require a tenant to pay any amount or any cost that is attributable to a period of time that the tenant was not entitled to use and occupy the rental unit. What does that mean? What if these capital improvements entailed moving tenants for a temporary period? So for that particular period, if their capital improvement petition is granted that time period where the tenants were out of the unit, the pass-through cost is not going to apply to that period. A landlord may not require a tenant to pay more than the tenant's share of the cost attributable to the tenant's rental unit that is permitted to be passed through to the tenant. So theoretically, if there's a capital improvement that benefits all rental units, it's going to be passed through on an, on an equal basis. And then finally, if the capital improvement inures solely to the benefit of one or more rental units, the surcharge shall only be annualized but applied to rental units benefited. So if there's some sort of improvement that only benefits a particular building, if it's a multi-building complex, then obviously the charges are only going to be passed through to the tenants of that building. That's just an example of, of that last point. Next slide, please. Some more considerations for capital improvement petitions. Equipment otherwise eligible as a capital improvement will not be considered if a use fee is charged. For example, a coin-operated washing machine or dryer. Theoretically, that charge is already passed on to the tenants. So we can't then ask for, the landlord can't then ask for more or additional costs to be passed through to those tenants because they should be collecting them in the fees with the washer and dryers. Pass-through costs for capital improvements shall not be considered rent. This is a separate charge from rent. So when the landlord's evaluating rent increases, the landlord should not be considering that pass-through charge as part of the rent. Next slide, please. So capital improvement petition calculations. The capital improvement costs must be amortized over the useful life of the capital improvement, not to exceed 10% of the current rent. So whatever that value that a hearing officer comes up with for the tenant to be passed through to the tenant, it can never exceed more than 10% of their current rent. So current rent for any time period shall not include capital improvement pass-through amounts. For mixed-use structures and landlord-occupied rental units, only the percent of residential square footage will be applied in the calculation. So, you know, if it's a mixed-use structure, part commercial, part residential, obviously, only the residential portion that's going to be using the capital improvement is going to be calculated. If a unit is occupied by an agent of the landlord, this unit must be included when determining the average cost per rental unit. So again, it's all about making it a pro-rata share of whatever the residents are going to be benefited from. If a landlord's reimbursed for capital improvements, say through an insurance claim or court-awarded damages or some other subsidy, such reimbursement must be deducted from the capital improvement before costs are amortized and allocated amongst the rental units. So if the landlord's getting money from somewhere else, they can't double-recover. They can't ask for the tenants to, to pay for it too if they're getting it from an insurance company. Next slide, please. So standard of review for a capital improvement petition, again, these are all factors that should be considered, including when the capital improvement was completed, that the landlord's petition was made within two years of completion of the capital improvement. It's distinguished from ordinary repair or maintenance. It's for the primary benefit, use, and enjoyment of the tenant. So it's something that actually benefits the tenant and not just an exclusive benefit for the landlord. It's, a capital improvement is a permanently fixed, is permanently fixed in place or relatively immobile and appropriated to the use of the rental unit. And again, there's no use fee like a coin-operated washer or dryer or other charge imposed on the tenants for the use, and that it's cost-factored and amortized, you know, which basically means the costs are allocated over time. Next slide, please. So moving on to the third type of petition, which is the tenant petition. So a tenant may also submit a petition to the program administrator on one or more of the following grounds. Number one, to request a review of a rental increase in excess of the maximum allowed rent increase. So again, for, for the 24, 2024, 2025 period that was on the prior slide, it's, it should only be 3%. So if, if a tenant receives a rent increase in excess of 3% for that period, they can submit a tenant petition. A tenant may also submit a petition to request a reduction in rent based on a decreased housing services. So what are housing services? Say, for example, at the beginning of their tenancy, they had the use of a pool, and the pool has been shut down or is damaged. They haven't, they, they no longer have use of the pool. They can submit a tenant petition for a reduction in rent because they have lost an amenity. That actually happened to me personally when I used to be a renter. But anyways. To request a reduction in rent based on failure of the landlord to maintain habitable premises, including health and safety, fire, or building code violations. So if there's some sort of habitability issue, they can submit a tenant petition. And then also to contest a capital improvement cost as unauthorized or excessive pass-through. So if the landlord did submit a capital improvement petition, and the hearing officer said, you're allowed to pass through 20 bucks a month, but instead, the landlord said, I don't want to do that. I want to pass through 50 bucks a month, they can submit a tenant petition. Or for any other violation of our ordinance, they can submit a tenant petition. Next slide, please. So when, when can a tenant file a tenant petition for an unauthorized rent increase? So where applicable, a tenant filing a tenant petition shall do so within the following time limit, limits. Once the tenant receives notice of the unauthorized rent increase, they have 30 days after service of such notice to submit a tenant petition. Next slide, please. How about for an unauthorized rent increase where they didn't get notice of the rent increase? So where notice is not provided as required, the tenant shall file a petition for review of rent within 30 days after the tenant knowing about the landlord's alleged failure to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. So when they become knowledgeable about this illegal rent increase or unauthorized rent increase, they can submit a tenant petition within 30 days. So under California law, rent increases have to be written. So if the landlord came, that's a good question. If the landlord came by and said, hey, I'm raising your rent. You need to pay me next month, you know, $200 more. As soon as they became knowledgeable about that, then they need to submit a petition within 30 days. For any other violation not related to a rent increase, the tenant has 180 days from the date they're knowledgeable about the alleged violation to file a tenant petition. So that's any other violation under the ordinance. Next slide, please. So what is the standard of review for a tenant petition? So a hearing officer needs to consider all relevant factors, including landlord allows violations of the ordinance or other applicable state and local statutes to persist. So if the landlord's already in violation of our ordinance for other reasons, or if there are certain habitability issues, which are usually governed by state law, a reduction of housing services, living space, or other amenities, substantial deterioration of the rental unit other than as a result of ordinary wear and tear. So if there are likes, just they haven't upkept the rental unit, that could be a factor considered. Landlord's failure to provide adequate housing services. If the tenant provided landlord with reasonable notice and opportunity to correct the conditions that provide the basis for the petition, that can also be considered. And then landlord's failure to comply with the ordinance or applicable housing, health, and safety codes. Those are all things that can be considered under a tenant petition. All right. So those, those are our three petitions. So let's talk about the actual petition process. Next slide. So who are the players in a petition? Who are the parties? The landlord or tenant may file a petition with the program administrator, like we just, like I just explained. And petition forms are on our city's website, so anyone can pull whatever petition they need. And the landlord and tenant of the rental unit that is subject to the petition are the parties to the petition. So it's between tenants and landlords, landlords and tenants. The city is not a party to these petitions. Next slide. So filing the petition. Upon filing a petition, the program administrator shall notify the petitioner of the acceptance or denial of the petition based upon the completeness of the submission. So the program administrator does not assess the merits of the petition and only refuses acceptance of the petition that does not include required information or documentation to comply with the ordinance. So the, the program administrator does not make any substantive filings. Our program administrator merely looks at the documentation. Do we have enough to submit this petition to a hearing officer? And so that's the only evaluation they need. And sometimes there's a lot of back and forth with that, trying to get all the documentation so that they can have a complete petition to pass through to the next, to the next stage. Next slide, please. So no petition shall proceed if a decision has been made with regard to a prior petition based on the same or substantially same grounds within the previous 180 days. So a tenant's not, or a landlord or tenant isn't going to be able to, like, just continually submit petitions, like, every month on the same thing. Next slide, please. Landlord petitions or upward rent adjustments. So no landlord petition or upward adjustment of rent shall be authorized if the landlord, number one, has continued to fail to comply after an order of the board with any provisions of the ordinance and/or orders or regulations issued thereunder by the board. So if, if, if a landlord is not in compliance with our ordinance or any directives under our ordinance, they're, they're not going to be able to submit a petition. Or if the landlord has failed to bring the unit into compliance with the implied warranty of habitability. So if there's some sort of habitability issue that the Rent Stabilization Division or the board is aware of, then they're not going to, they're not going to get, and they're not going to get a decision where they can increase the rent. Next slide. Okay, so notice of petition. So after acceptance of the petition, so once the program administrator reviews for completeness and it's complete, the program administrator then provides written notice to the landlord, if it's filed by the tenant, or to the tenant if it was a petition filed by the landlord, upon receipt of the petition. So the program administrator is going to notify the other party that a petition has been filed. A written notice shall inform the parties of the petition process, the right to respond, and include a copy of the completed petition and supportive documents. So the other party is going to get all of the information that was provided to the city.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
For the language of petition, whether it's written by the tenant or submitted by the tenant or the landlord, is it provided to the tenant or landlord in the language that they speak? So the landlord speaks Vietnamese, and the tenant only speaks English?
That's a good question. So I know our forms have been, and correct me if I'm wrong, Maricela, our forms have been translated in different languages. Is that correct? Okay, so the petitions are available in different languages, so that they are able to do that. But I don't think we've yet had a petition in a different language. Is that correct, Maricela?
I don't recall any petitions in any language.
So in, in the event that that does happen, obviously, it, go ahead. Okay. So those forms, if they are submitted in another language, they are going to have to be translated into English because the hearings are conducted in English. And the trans, there, are the parties free to bring translators? Is that how we're operating? Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The translation services, is that provided by the Rent Stabilization Division? Or is that?
No, I didn't hear your question.
No problem. So the translation services, if you need to translate a, submit a petition into a different language, are those services provided by the city and the division? Or does that have to be done by the petitioner?
There we go. We haven't encountered that. Normally, what we had is in Spanish, and they've normally have had a translator brought to the hearing. Either a spouse or a child that they, they bring with them. An adult relative, they'll bring in for translation.
Thank you. Is this a service that you think the city should consider moving forward in the event that these petitions do increase and more people decide to submit them in their language?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Oh, do you think that the city, is this a service that the city should consider investing in if it reaches that point? Or is there a landing place in the event that there is a language submitted that the city doesn't have the resources to translate into English?
We could possibly consider it as we move forward. As you can remember, we were brand new. So we're establishing the rental registry and so collecting those fees. And so that's been a bit of a upward challenge, I would say.
Okay, that's good to know. Because I know our duty is also to make sure that you all have the resources you need to do everything that needs to be done. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So again, the, each party will receive the other party's petition. And then if a response is submitted by the opposing party, that response will also be made available to, to the petitioner. Next slide, please. So hearing officer. What is a hearing officer? A hearing officer is an impartial person appointed by the program administrator. And they're the ones that conduct a hearing to act on a petition. So these are independent individuals. So these are independent individuals hired by the city. And it's not only the rent stabilization division that has petition hearings. There are other departments that utilize hearing officers. So they're usually, I don't want to say always, but most of the time they are attorneys, private attorneys that are independent from the city, that don't know the parties. And when these petitions come before them, they're just a neutral third party that makes a decision based on, on the petitions and responses. So the hearing officer has the following powers: to make a determination on the petition, and then any other powers delegated to the hearing officer by the board. Next slide, please. Board action in lieu of reference to a hearing officer. So the board on its own motion, in the board's sole discretion, may hold a hearing on a petition without a petition first being heard by a hearing officer. Next slide. Time of the hearing. Each accepted petition shall be scheduled for hearing by the hearing officer to be held on a date not more than 60 days from the date the program administrator accepts the petition. The hearing can be held beyond the 60 days if all the parties agree to that. And I think we've had that happen before. And the hearing notice, so the, the notice informing the parties of the hearing has to be at least 10 days' notice, so that notice will go out at least 10 days before the hearing. Next slide, please. Consolidation. All landlord petitions pertaining to tenants in the same building shall be consolidated for hearing. And all petitions filed by tenants occupying the same building shall be consolidated for hearing. This just makes it easier so that, you know, if there are 10 residents that are claiming that they got an unauthorized rent increase, then we consolidate those all into, to one hearing so that we don't have 10 different hearings, because it's really kind of about the same issue. Unless, sorry, unless, unless the program administrator or hearing officer finds good cause not to consolidate, they, for the most part, will be consolidated. Next slide, thank you. Right to assistance. All parties to a hearing may have assistance in presenting evidence and developing their position from attorneys, legal workers, or any other person designated by said parties. So these are very informal hearings. They're not like before, again, they're not before a judge, they're before a neutral third party. And so they're, the parties are allowed to bring whoever they want to help them present their case. Next slide. Similarly, the formal rules of evidence are not applicable. So, you know, you don't, you don't need to have an attorney, but you can have one if you want. And the rules of evidence that would apply in the court across the way, I don't even know which way I'm pointing, but you don't have to follow those. Evidence in the opinion of the hearing officer that is credible and relevant is acceptable. So that's, it's up to the hearing officer how, how they want to consider evidence and what evidence to consider. Evidence that's induly repetitious, lacking credibility, or irrelevant shall be excluded upon order of the hearing officer. So the hearing officer has a lot of discretion on what to hear. You know, there are some people that think these hearings need to go for days. We've had petitioners claim that. Really, they shouldn't be going for days. It's, it's up to the hearing officer to really get down to the core issues and make it a, an efficient and reasonable process for the parties. Next slide. So what may be considered evidence in these hearings? Documents, testimony, written declarations, books, records, papers, you know, in relation to a business or some sort of property owner. Information contained in the petition, information contained in our rental registry. You know, again, we have a rental registry that includes information about the, all the properties that are registered. So number, I think we collect number of bedrooms. Is that right, Maricela? I can't remember. Yeah, a number of bedrooms, you know, rental, rental amounts, rent increases, things like that are contained in our rental registry. A hearing officer may request the city to conduct a current building inspection upon good cause that current, if the current info does not reflect the current condition of the unit, and any other evidence that may be pertinent to the proceeding per the hearing officer. Next slide, please. So the quantum of proof. The person who files the petition shall have the burden of proof. And what is the burden of proof? The petition will be granted if it's supported by a preponderance of the evidence. You may have heard this term. It's legal jargon. It's what's used in our civil courts. And if you had to quantify it, it would be at least 51%. So if, if you think 51% that the petition should be granted, then, then it's going to be granted. So I know some people are more numbers people, but the, the standard is preponderance of the evidence. Next slide, please. Notice of decision. So once the hearing officer makes the decision, it has to be no later than 30 days after the hearing. So they have up till 30 days to consider all the evidence and, and make a written decision. They will provide a written statement, including the findings. They may be reasonably conditioned in a manner necessary to effectuate the purpose of the ordinance. So again, the hearing officer has discretion and the hearing officer needs to make sure that it's furthering the purposes, the purposes of the ordinance. And then the parties will be notified of their right to appeal to the board and/or judicial review. So what is the hearing record? So what, what becomes part of the petition hearing record? Well, it's the petition, it's any exhibits to the petition or exhibits offered during the hearing, any papers considered, documents required to be filed or accepted into evidence at the time of the hearing, a list of participants that are present, a summary of all testimony and accepted, accepted in proceedings, statement of all materials officially noticed, all recommended decisions, orders, and/or rulings during the hearing, all final decisions and orders and rulings, the reasoning for each final decision order and ruling. And then all hearings are recorded audio, by audio. So that becomes a part of the, the record as well. Next slide, please. So that was the petition process. The next section, we're going to talk about just kind of an overview of the appeal process. So what's an appeal? Well, any person aggrieved by the decisions of the hearing officer may appeal to the board. So basically, if the, the losing party, if I could put it in very blatant terms, is probably the person who's not happy with the hearing officer decision, so they can file an appeal. Next slide. So the timing for appeals. An appeal, and, and this is where review of the board comes into play. So they are appealing to the board. An appeal to the board shall be filed no later than 30 days after receipt of notice of the decision of the hearing officer. So board review. What does the board have the authority to do? So the board shall either affirm, meaning they, they will uphold what the hearing officer did. They will reverse what the hearing officer did, so they can, they can find a, in, in opposite of what the hearing officer found. Or they can modify the hearing officer decision. So they can, you know, maybe you like this part but didn't like this part. So those are all the options. During appeals, evidence. Unless the board elects to conduct a de novo hearing, the board review of the hearing officer's decisions shall be based on the hearing record. So whatever was included at the time of the hearing, all the evidence accepted, that, that is the universe of what the board considers during the appeal. If good cause exists, the board may consider additional evidence. And good cause could be evidence that didn't exist at the time of the hearing. That's good cause. Or evidence which could not be discovered using due diligence. So if it was something that just wasn't going to be discovered until now, that's, that's other good cause. Next slide, please. So unless the board elects to conduct a de novo hearing, again, it's, it's going to be based on the hearing record. So what does de novo mean? De novo is Latin, it's, it's a legal term. It's Latin for anew or from the beginning. So that would mean the board hears all the evidence all over again, like just a, a brand new hearing. Next slide, please. So the standard of review. The standard of review on appeal is substantial evidence. And generally speaking, evidence that is, that a reasonable mind could accept as adequate to support the conclusion is substantial evidence. And this is, of course, unless the law requires otherwise by some, some other means. If the board elects to hear an appeal de novo, so, so brand new hearing, the standard of review shall be preponderance of the evidence. Or again, like with the petitions, more likely than not, at least 51%. Next slide, please. And then finality of decision. The decision of the hearing officer shall be the final decision of the board in the event there's no appeal to the board. So the final, after 30 days, if no appeal is submitted, then that's just the final decision for purposes of proceeding under the ordinance. The decision, i- if somebody does decide to file an appeal, the decision of the hearing officer is not stayed, meaning it's not going to be stopped. The hearing officer's decision is going, going to continue in play. So like if the, the hearing officer made a decision, like, hey, this was an unauthorized rent increase, the rent should only be such and such amount, then that decision is going to remain pending the appeal. So the hearing officer decision is going to remain in effect until the appeal is decided. Next slide. So for a decision reversal or modification, if the board reverses or modifies the decision of the hearing officer, the board is required to order the appropriate party to make retroactive payments as applicable. So if it, the idea behind this is to put the part, if, if the board decides, hey, the hearing officer decision was either completely wrong or wrong in a particular way, then the idea is to put the parties back in the position as if the board's decision was the hearing officer decision. So we just want to put the parties back into the position based on whatever the board decision is. Next slide. And then finally, let's talk about some just strategies to implement best practices. And the, these come from the Model Code of Ethics for the National Association of Hearing Officers. So all of our hearing officers are required to follow these general rules that are published. And again, it's, th- these are just some general standards or a model code of ethics. And it's meant to guide behavior, behavior of hearing officials. We're not the only city that has hearing officers. Many cities, you know, throughout California have hearing, hearing officials or hearing officers. And it might, may provide some helpful guidance as applicable to the board as you, as you guys hear appeals. Again, these are not any kind of requirements under our ordinance, but I think they're just kind of good guidelines to, to kind of consider when, when you're considering appeals. Next slide, please. So competence. Hearing officials should be clear and fair-minded in the application of the law to the facts of each case. So when you're considering an appeal and considering our ordinance and, and all the, the requirements under the ordinance, applying the facts to what is required under the ordinance, you know, we should try and be clear and fair-minded. Hearing officials should communicate their decisions completely and clearly. So again, clear, you know, clear, fair, all these kind of buzzwords. Next slide, please. Impartiality. Hearing officials should always strive to assure persons involved that the proceedings will be conducted and decided impartially. Hearing officials should act in such a way that no one could reasonably believe that any person or agency could improperly influence them in the performance of their duties. Next slide, please. Independence. Hearing officials should exercise independence of action and judgment to protect the due process rights of the parties, maintaining decisional independence from agency management and programs. Next slide, please. Ex parte communication. So what does ex parte mean? It's another Latin term that's used in the law for one side only or by or for one party. So generally, ex parte refers to communication between a hearing official and fewer than all the parties to an administrative hearing. So the hearing officer only talks to the petitioner and the responding party isn't there. That's considered ex parte communication. And hearing officials should not receive information from any party without sharing that information with all parties. So there should be no one-on-one communication between the hearing officer and only one party. All parties always need to be involved when it comes to the hearing officer, because again, the hearing officer is a neutral third party that's supposed to be making the decision. Next slide, please. Dignity and decorum of the forum. So hearing officials should promote the dignity and decorum of the administrative hearing process and tribunal. Ensure all persons involved conduct themselves with proper decorum. So, you know, this is, I don't know if any of you guys watch Judge Judy, there's a lot of screaming and yelling. Yeah, that we shouldn't be doing that, and that's not how real court is. That's, that's entertainment. Next slide, please. I do like Judge Judy, though. Professional conduct. Always act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity, impartiality, and efficiency of the hearing process. Maintain high standards of professional conduct and encourage other hearing officials do the same. Be temperate and dignified. Be courteous to all in the performance of their duties. Follow procedural formalities, making exceptions only in the interest of fairness, and punctually fulfill their professional commitments. Personal conduct. Reframe from all illegal or ethically reprehensible conduct. Do not accept gifts or favors from parties to any proceedings before them. Do not engage in activities which may bring their own personal or professional interests into conflict with the performance of official duties. Give the impression that any party is in a special position. Treat all participants with equal courtesy and dignity. For example, before, during, and after a hearing, restrict contacts regarding the matter such as social conversation with agency staff or representatives. So again, this is all about creating that picture that, you know, everyone's going to be neutral and they're not coming in with any kind of preconceived notions or favoritism or anything like that. Next slide, please. Confidentiality. Do not disclose confidential or private information obtained by reason of your official position or authority to accept, accept as required by law. Never seek to use confidential information to further personal interests and avoid ex parte communication about the case with anyone, including family, friends, and agency staff and associates unless authorized by statute or agency regulations. And that is it. Thank you again for your service. Did anyone have any questions about anything? Yes.
Yeah. Of the three types of petitions, which ones are you guys seeing that are the most common?
I think Maricela can answer that question.
We see a lot of tenant petitions. We also have seen several.
We also have seen several capital improvement petitions and some very, in that sort of order. Oh, got it. Petitions.
So now are these tenants wanting, obviously wanting a reduction in?
There are several issues. There's rent increases, unlawful rent increases. It could be a property that's had many issues such as flooding, inhabitable conditions. So there's a number of, of situations that we come across.
Got it. Cool. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I have a few, but I already asked them. So this has to do with some of the questions I asked earlier. And definitely have no expectation that there are clear answers to this question at all. But why do you think there haven't been that many petitions submitted by Vietnamese residents? And I only say that because you're the large community and population of Vietnamese residents that are renters in the city. Like, have you heard from those residents directly saying that they don't know how to apply? But they don't know how to submit the petition? Or anything like that?
I can tell you that our division is very active in doing outreach. So we're bringing the information out to the community. As far as why they don't have that information, I couldn't answer that. What I can tell you is that we're actively out in the community at every event. We're doing meetings. We have 56 workshops, educational workshops through Santa Ana USD. Currently I've sent you some flyers with information asking to promote those events. We included legal aid. Why did we do that? Because a lot of the times when we meet with the public, a lot of the questions that they have or the reason they're going to these workshops is to get some answers as far as their situation. And so bringing in legal aid can assist in that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Couple other questions. On slide 28, it shares that the board can decide if we want to hear a petition without going to the hearing officers. So how would the board know which petitions have come through in order to make that decision? Or is there a process we should be following?
So I think that's something that the rent stabilization division is working on and, and best practices on how to present those things to the board. So I'll, Mari Sella, if you want to.
Yes, that is correct. We're working on how to inform and keep you abreast as to what is coming through the pipeline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, actually, I skipped my next question. That was all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again for your time and all your work. The second item under Work Studies Session is Rental Housing Board Regulations.
So you're, you have the policies correct. So I think that at that point you have to review and then basically ask for a motion.
Okay. Do you all want to take a couple minutes? Okay. Does anyone have any questions or do you want more time?
I have a question. On page three, it references seven days prior in section three and section four. It doesn't specify if it's calendar or business days. And I noticed on the following page four, it does specify five business days. So I just wanted to know if we should clarify if it's going to be seven business days or calendar days on page three.
We talked about that, right, Andra?
Yeah, so if, if it doesn't state business days, then it's presumed calendar days.
Days, okay.
If an appeal is sent to the board, how much advance notice do we get to know that it's going to be discussed or upcoming meeting? And like on us, so how will we know that an appeal was sent and will be brought before us?
Are we talking about an appeal?
Yes.
Okay, so repeat your question.
When will the board know that an appeal has been sent to us for review?
Andra, can you help me with that?
I don't mean to be so dry, it's just been a weird
Yeah.
weather day. And then to add to that question, how long do we get to look over those materials?
So to answer your first question, the, so the rent stabilization division has their own regulations, policies and procedures for procedural aspects of the ordinance. So pursuant to those regulations, within three days after the appeal is filed, the board is notified. And then, I'm sorry, the second question was?
How long do we get to review those materials?
So I think it kind of depends on when they come in. So you'll, you'll be notified of the appeal. So I'll defer to Mari Sella, but I'm sure she would submit the entire petition to you guys. But then there's a time period for the responding party to submit a response. And so at some point, I'm sure Mari Sella will provide that to you when it's, when it comes in. I think per the regular, the, the division's regulations, the opposing party has 14 days to provide a response. And then the, the, the board's going to have a staff report with all the materials which are provided for the Brown Act. Three, it's three days before the hearing. So that's when all those materials are, are submitted. And the parties, I believe, receive all materials. Is it seven days, seven days prior?
And, and I'll submit a complete packet. So you'll have all the information and be ready to go.
Okay, thank you. So I think what makes sense is just for us to wait until that whole process is clearly laid out. And then, do you think you'd be able to provide it for us in an email or a packet? Just lay out the process and the timeline?
I can provide that to you guys in an email.
That'd be really great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. And then do you mind advising on what you just said earlier for this item? Just move to the next one or?
I'm sorry. Can you read that?
As chaired, we move to the next item? Or?
So you would, at this point, you would either move to approve or move to continue.
Can I get a motion then to approve the regulations as is or to continue?
A move to approve.
Okay. Second, all right, thank you. Do I ask for, if everyone's, okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Great. Matter approved by unanimous consent. Okay, so thank you everyone so much for that. And excuse me as I asked a lot of these questions, but I do want to make sure that the board is as effective as it possibly can be. So with that being said, does staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you so much. Does the commission have any comments they wish to share?
Yes, is there any way we can get this presentation like via email or?
Absolutely. We'll get that out to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank staff for their time and the work that they're putting into. Not only everything to make the rental housing and rent stabilization run smoothly, but also to take the time to train us on all the different procedures. I do appreciate all the staff's work on efforts.
Yeah, I did all that. Thank you so much. This is, I think a lot of people have questions, at least the public have questions about the purpose and effectiveness of the board and what it can do. So I'm looking forward to working with city staff on making it as effective as it can be. This has been a while coming. But yeah, thank you. Thank you for all your time with the presentation. And any other comments? Cool. This meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 16th, 2025 at 4:30.